Prior to us starting our town hall, but yesterday we had some technical difficulties. Something about our software. You know, we do, we utilize a software to where we can, you know, put graphs on the screen, which is, looks professional, you know, of course you can do PowerPoint presentations on WebEx. But the program that we were using, the software they were using was really clean and showing our presentations. So we're not able to utilize that. Maybe there needs to be an update. We've got to talk to the company. So today we're going to be utilizing just a regular WebEx site to do the town hall. It shouldn't be too much difference, but you'll, you'll see the difference though. You can tell the difference as we wait for people to log on, to click on to the town hall. Yesterday evening, we had the radio forum on K T N N. I want to say thank you to Eddie Scott Yazi for facilitating the forum, very informative. We streamed it live as well, using Facebook, just a Facebook software, Facebook Live software. And then we are also live on the radio. Much of it was in Navajo language. I know many comments that come during these town hall meetings is let's have it a little bit more in Navajo, especially those terms, just new terms and you know, me, I don't know those new terms yet because some of them are still being in the works and what we want to do is have a universal Navajo term for these scientific words, which is a challenge, you know? That's why we named the COVID nineteen based on the scientific term, right? The question is, COVID nineteen, rather than calling it something and then later on, the term changes. We want it to stay with a universal term so that it could also be put into the healthcare, Navo healthcare texts, maybe even our Navajo students that are going to school to be a physician, you know? That way it's more scientific, but for us Navajos, we understand it now, you know? When we say the question is, we already know it's COVID nineteen. I know there was some people that were out there saying, why are you utilizing and naming that? You know, and I'm just giving you an overview of why we did that, you know? We, we got to think scientific as well, because there are some terms that are have yet to be translated into the Navajo language and plus so physicians, scientists and experts can know what we're talking about too. When we utilize that new Navajo term in public. So I, I know some of you are tuning in right now. Thank you for tuning in. I'm just you know, just explaining a little bit of things while people are logging on. As you see, we're doing something a little different. Yesterday we had technical difficulties. The software that we use may, may, I don't know, maybe the company did some kind of decision without letting us know with Facebook and YouTube, because we try to use that software. As you know, the software that we're using have, we've been using for many of our town hall meetings, very professional, very clean. But yesterday, the reason why we weren't able to get on to, to that software was because we couldn't. It was a, some kind of update and where we also heard from the other programs here on the Navajo Nation having a similar issue. So our assumption is it's with the company and maybe an updating the software needs to happen. So we are evaluating that right now. So we are gonna, we are gonna sorry about that. Try to get me, get our people to log on. So I think we may have a good number of people that are logged down right now. So we can begin again, yesterday we had last evening we had a town hall. We did do it live on Facebook. We didn't use the software. That's what we're going to be doing today, utilizing the software, the Facebook software, not the other software that we're using to do this. Hopefully it's clean. I know Eli is very good at running these types of meetings. We're trying to stay as professional as we can. So we ask for your patience and your understanding as we try to fix the, the main software that we've been using. So there's almost close to 300 people on Facebook Live right now. So we can go ahead and begin. Viola, good morning. Belinda, good morning as well. These are viewers that are tuning in and commenting on our comment stream. Susanna Ghul, good morning as well. Julia Mitchell here in Windarok, good morning as well. And many others that are tuning in from all over the world, all over the country, all over the great Navajo Nation to get an update on COVID nineteen. We do have a lot of updates today and we hope you can also pass that along to other citizens here on the Navajo Nation or our parents or grandparents or our people. Veronica Scott, good morning as well. So we have about 300 people on live. So we'll go ahead and begin. Well, as always, we start with the prayer and we'll start out with Vice President and we'll go down the list of presenters, including Dr. Laura Hammett from the John Hopkins School of American Indian Health and I H S and Dr. Jill Jim from the Navajo Department of, of Health as well. So turn the time over to our Vice President and start off, start us off with the prayer. Vice President.
Oh, yeah, Mr. President. Today is April fourteenth, Wednesday, a little change as you heard, we had technical difficulties yesterday. So let us open up a prayer, pass it right back to our president for his updating. Then we have our esteemed cast of health professionals here to give the latest on all of the changes and updates that's been happening in this pandemic. So let us open up in prayer. God, we thank you for another day of life on this day, Lord, blessed day, Lord. The seasons are changing and Father, we thank you for it. Time honored throughout history of time as we know it, Lord, you have returned and did your, your, your updates, Lord. And so we thank you again that spring is here and we put up with the allergies and all the things, Lord. And we pray that the burdens of the citizens of the Navajo Nation would be small. What we ask that you continue to heal our land, be with us in this meeting, Lord, we pray your wisdom, your great wisdom, Lord, in which we as leaders can run and conduct the meeting with the new knowledge and new updates, Father. And may the people of the land be blessed. We thank you. We ask your blessings again on this time as we conduct this meeting. All glory goes to you in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. President. And so ladies and gentlemen, the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Miss.
Thank you, Vice President, and maybe what you can also do, and of course you, you do mention the Navajo Nation Economic Recovery Work Group that, you know, you chair really placed a big task on our Vice President, but I know he's the, the person for the job because he comes from a business background and has knowledge on businesses. I know the businesses are suffering throughout the Navajo Nation, throughout this country because of COVID nineteen. I know right now we're still in lockdown for our visitors. We know we're not allowing visitors at this time to our tourist destinations and our visitor destinations. And I know that Vice President has been talking with many of our cabinet members regarding economic recovery. And the American Rescue Plan Act does have provision in there for business relief. So those of you that are getting hit hard, vendors, tourists, tour guides, tour operations, hotels, you know, relief is on the way. And we just ask for your patience and a lot of those discussions have been facilitated by our Vice President. And he will, he'll be giving an update on that. And I do appreciate the Vice President's leadership on this with his business background, his, his ideas for the economy here. I know folks have said, where's your economic plan? Well, the economic plan is based on what the Navajo needs are. And we do have a plan. The plan is universal. It's not segment. It's not focused specifically on the economy or a certain group. It's universal because that's who we are as Navajo. And we want to be able to plan in a comprehensive approach to not just economic development. I always say economic and community development because it ties hand in hand, the economy and the community. And we're all looking forward to the monies that are coming in. And next week we'll be going out to the agencies to get updates and get information from the chapters so that if I plan, once these monies come in. So thank you, Vice President, for your leadership. Okay, cool. A daa eh ya, na di, di, alheel kit allah e jin ya. The kweela, nihiekeen nihidna, beda dolna, di, the kwozintzhaagi, na hast eit aata. Jo, eh banda kweele, a, a kweeche, radio bi, aro, hana, nihijekon deely. So daara eh, na kide, allah e jin na, kidei bedolna, la, di, the kwozintzhaagi, na hast eit aata. Aro, aro, la, nihibzajjutena, nihiekeen nihidna. So, baha, baha jin odo, baha shniho, daa konde, hada inolna, di, nihie mask, aro, nihilla. Yitzis, baada hollia, do, aro, la, handahtle, ha, na, na, jo, di na, ba, ba, hanishna. Di, thakijin ya daa, do, di jin ya daa, o, yudet es, kit nevi kee, abka, haile benina. Jo, kudon deklkhaagi, adan, nihilnia, benina, akudahot, i, di, ki, eh, allah, nihiekeen nihidna, allah, handahtle. Aro, mask, o, chodai, chodaiyol, i, da, jo, eh, yesi, di, the kwozintzhaagi, bikidje, na, annesh. Di, nihichito, nihize, bikidast, jo. Eh, kud, eh, di, choshtoit ini, do, da, da, do, lugucho, do, kuiro, chachta, eh, mask, chodal, o. Ah, eh, na, nti, nihidashik, eh, roshina, ah, eh, na, nti, chashin, eh, ya, la, a, eh, deya, ha, na, hana, nihijeh, handa, li, ha, no. Ah, jo, a, eh, deya, eh, di, bikidje, na, annesho, da, di, na, hlini, ki, eh, benina, eh, nihijeh, ba, nihijeh, ba, eh, ni, ke, kudo. Aro, a, a, chokkudo, nihiekeen nihidna, beda dolna, ki, eh, tchadin, demelia, jo, ba, na, kien, na, zit, di, na, hast, he, hast, tchadin, na, hast, e, na, lta, ik, o. Di, yhaillnia, da, do, di, jin, jo, a, kud, a, na, eh, kud, a, beda dolna. Aro, nihiekeen nihidna, nitsa, adajjutena, ki, eh, allah, demelia, jo, ba, na, kien, na, zit, di, na, hast, he, hast, tchadin, na, na, ki. Eh, na, lta, kon, nihiekeen nihidna, batso, di, ilze. Ah, ni, iltskoshin, nihidet, i, o, da, ah, ni, iltskoshin, kon, la, nihiekeen nihidna, nihiekeistan, li, nihib. Yitzaa, adajjutena, shunda, a, kud, o, na, ha, la, je, na, shaa, do, na, ha, yashti, jo, shind, shind, shida, la, nitsa, ajjutena. Ba, da, nihirna, o, nihijey, dasdell, nihijet, dasdell. Aro, shinkon, nihiekeba, batso, di, ilze, ndo, ne, ah, ni, iltskoo, klka, ne, chah, di, bi, ched, di, khandeshni, ah, ni, na, hlini, o, kon, ze, bahzli. Chashin, na, ha, daas, ts. Eh, chihe, jo, eh, kud, o, nihiekeen nihidna, na, ha, lchun, nitsa, o, kien, na, li, ke, kon, ke, kuit, eh, nihidna, nevi kee, abka, eh, shiba. Adat, on, ha, daas, ts, eh, chihe, la, eh, a, do, ze, bikidko, dal, na, da, chashin, eh, do, don, sun, da, da, na, la, chashin, eh, yi, adad, na, o, da. Kon, nihie, kud, o, yijeh, ba, deeni, ki, ra, shon, a, da, da, la, ya, do, kon, ze, nihijeh, ko, dal, ya, ki, eh, ro, chodal, eh, shik, eh, ro, shina. So if you can bear with me, just through the presentation here. Go ahead and put the slide up. Let's see if it works for the count. Thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine have been confirmed here on the Navajo Nation. There it is. And one thousand, two hundred and sixty-two of our people have lost their lives to COVID nineteen. Now, if you look at the new cases, twenty-four hours, one day, two new cases, zero deaths. You know, the days prior, we saw an uptick. We still got to continue to follow these protocols that are set, that are in place here on the Navajo Nation place. We see a fluctuation going up and down. We went over twenty at one time. And these simple, I, I, I call them simple protocols that are put in place, do push back on the virus. And of course, some of you will say, man, that's the same thing. It's the same things that we say that we know is evident based on the data. Some people ask me, well, what's the data on wearing masks? Look at the Navajo Nation. We've been wearing masks and we are at an all time low. Wear your mask, even if you're inside and or outdoors. Wearing mask, social distancing, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer and staying home. Those four things by now for over a year now, we've been saying that. So it should be, you probably don't even need to think about it. It should be something that we do on a daily basis. Now, the fifth thing that just recently was added was to get vaccinated. Vaccinations push back on the virus. Of course, we do have an update on J and J. We stopped the Johnson and Johnson shots because there have been some people, not here on the Navajo Nation, but throughout this country that have some adverse effect. And just to be safe, we stopped the J and J Johnson and Johnson doses here on the Navajo Nation. Look at this. Now, I'll give you an example. Six point eight million doses were given of Johnson and Johnson throughout this country. Over four thousand have been given here on the Navajo Nation. And like I said, no reports of any adverse reaction here on the Navajo Nation. So those four thousand, really, we haven't heard anything. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. But of the six point eight million doses given, there were six rare and severe blood clots. And they were among women between the ages of eighteen and forty-eight in the United States. Symptoms occurred six to thirteen days after the vaccination. So with these six, CDC felt like we should just pause to be on the safe side. And so because CDC issued that, we also did the same here on the Navajo Nation. But if you do have some severe headache, blurred vision, Caesar, seizure type, abdominal pain, leg pain or shortness of breath within the three weeks after vaccination, you should call your healthcare provider. If you're over three weeks and you're okay, then you know, a lot of these vaccines that were given Pfizer and Moderna, some of you have reported some headaches after, especially after the second shot. But those are usually reactions that with, that take place with any vaccination, even the flu shot, right? Someone say, well, I got a shot and then I got sick, right? That's just a medicine working within your body. But for J, Johnson and Johnson, we're going to follow the CDC protocol. We're going to suspend those. And always one shot, everybody was ready to get their vaccination and get it over with with one shot, but we're going to halt that. And but for Pfizer, Moderna, we're going to continue that, two shots. And Dr. Laura Hammett from the John Hopkins Center for American Indian Health will go a little bit more in depth on that. So just stay tuned, stay on the Facebook Live. She'll be right after the Vice President. And so the next slide just gives you again, an overview of the waves throughout the Navajo Nation. And you can see right around it, where it says April first there, you got fourteen, you got eighteen and starting to go up because we had some all time low numbers for a bit. You know, jurisdictions around us, all across the United States are seeing an uptick in cases. And as you know, the UK variant has been identified here on the Navajo Nation in the western part. It was isolated. Now let me just let you know, contact tracers. Man, they're, they're doing such a good job in isolating these events. They made sure that it didn't spread. And we got updates and, and as I, as we said, we, as we announced a couple of weeks ago, this was an elderly individual. So you know, the elderly are more susceptible to some severe illness from COVID nineteen. This individual was, had both shots and still caught COVID nineteen and was one of the variants, UK variant. But ladies and gentlemen, because this individual, this elderly individual received two doses, scientists and healthcare professionals have said to us, because of that, that individual didn't get sick, really sick. Went to the hospital, got checked in, got monitored, not much sickness was let go. And to this day, that individual has recovered. So that, that is one reason to get vaccinated Pfizer, Moderna. The two cases of the California variant has been identified. Yes, I said two. One last week was in the Central Agency and another one in the eastern part of the Navajo Nation. Of course, isolated events, contact tracers, caught the many people that were associated with that outbreak. And we are confident that they stopped the spread. But there are reports of other outbreaks within the community. Remember that in order for us to determine if it's a variant, a UK variant or a California variant, or even a Brazilian variant, it has to go to the labs to get tested. So we're doing random sample testing. And that means that not all of them are going out, but this morning we were talking about it. Since we said a low number of people getting infected, maybe we should just send them all to get identified for the variant, but that's an internal discussion by the healthcare professionals. But samples, you know, if you, one here and there goes out and gets sampled. As you know, as you may know, the UK variant has been identified in all fifty states, over two hundred jurisdictions. The California variant is within the southwest. No reports of the Brazilian variant or the South African variant on the Navajo Nation. These variants spread quickly, a lot quicker and make you sick even more if you catch it. But like I said, if you have the vaccine, scientists and healthcare professionals have said pushes back. Even if you catch it, it pushes back on the, the virus. And so that's why we encourage our people to get vaccinated. If you go to the next slide, Eli, third slide just shows you what I said earlier, you see an uptick in cases on the, in the United States, which is the blue, the black line, the dark line and the brown is us. And you can see both lines starting to creep up a little bit more. And that is the reason why we're staying cautious and I ask for your patience. Navajo people, ladies and gentlemen, I know we want to get back to some normal, but we want to keep you all safe, bottom line. And at some point, we're, we're going to just say, you know, you, you know what to do now. And to really just allow people to make their own judgments on what to do and what not to do. But at this point, you know, with over a thousand, two hundred of Navajo citizens passing and being a sovereign tribal government, we're, we're going to do everything in our powers to keep everyone safe. And that's why, you know, the schools are still online and virtual. Navajo Nation Council said, lets us wait and we'll wait until the summer for that. And we've been, we're hearing reports of outbreaks in the schools. Some schools are not abiding by the Navajo Nation protocol. And I've said this, I said this before, we will hold you accountable if anybody gets hurt. School board members and school board administrators, you know, I've heard outbreaks happening in Shiprock, Kayenta, Tubus City. And young people are not vaccinated. Everybody should know that. Adult population are vaccinated. And you know, people just want to get back to normal. I understand that. But we are being very cautious and even our, our visitors. And all I ask is for our citizens to continue to wear masks. Now, we don't have the resources to block off all the roads here on the Navajo Nation. People will get through. But we just need to kindly remind them. They know that Navajo has gotten hit hard. People know. And we just ask for their patience and their, for their consideration with all due respect. We just want to keep our people safe. If you go to the next slide, it just shows you the, see how we're yellow, Navajo Nation. And you can see that Arizona, New Mexico, Utah, Colorado is starting to go back up. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we showed this graph. They were way down at the bottom. We're still below the four states. Thank God. But you can see the states are starting to see a increase in cases. We are at the bottom, which is yellow. If you can't see the graph that well, yellow, the next above the Navajo Nation is Arizona. And above Arizona is New Mexico. Then you jump up to Utah and the high one there, the, the top red is Colorado. Colorado has seen some cases. Colorado has seen uh, some cases, high cases counts, daily case counts. So if you go to the next slide, it shows you a map of what's happening. Remember, these were yellow and green a couple of weeks ago throughout the country. Now you see oranges and reds now starting to happen. And you could see there um, that the orange is where we're, we're at right now. Navajo Nation, even though we've seen some really low numbers, we're just being cautious and staying the orange right now. Navajo Nation, nothing's changed in terms of the businesses open, businesses are still open for Navajo citizens. Uh, twenty-five percent occupancy, that's still the same. Uh, the mask mandate is still there. Uh, the only thing that has changed is we're going back to shelter in place and staying at home. We encourage people to stay at home as much as you can, just to go out for essential items. Uh, and, and shop maybe a week in advance. Maybe three or four weeks in advance, not every day to go get, you know, some chips or whatever you need. You can buy something, you know, stock up. That way we don't move as much and we stay at home a little bit more. Our kids are at home too and the government is still open. The, the number counts are, are low here on Navajo, but we, we, like I said, we see an increase uh, in cases, not significantly, but enough to keep us at orange, uh, orange level. The next uh, zone will be yellow, yellow would be fifty percent. Uh, but we're not there yet. Casinos are still open because our elderly, a, a lot of our elderly are vaccinated, but those are just for Navajo citizens only. And no reports of any outbreaks at the casinos. I, I think it's because our elderly have been vaccinated and I, I appreciate our elderly um, being a model for all of us uh, to stepping up and getting the vaccines as well. And then the next slide just gives you a comparison of the vaccination. Uh, the US updates are there. Uh, the US percent fully vaccinated is eighteen point five percent overall throughout the country. Percent that has been given to the US citizens is seventy-nine percent. Uh, you can read uh, the US updates, but let me go into the Navajo Nation here. This is as of uh, February ninth, I haven't get an update since then. Uh, but two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-five doses have come to the Navajo Nation. Uh, two hundred and ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight have been given. Uh, that's uh, eighty-six point five percent administered, what we receive, eighty-six point five percent. By the way, if you have relatives in Washington DC, uh, Washington DC Native Americans are uh, are gonna be getting their vaccines there in the Washington DC area. Come uh, visit our Facebook uh, social media page, you get more details on that. So let, let them know our relatives that are working in Washington DC will be allowed to get their vaccine. Uh, I, I don't have the information in front of me, but I know it's on social media, on our Facebook page. So uh, number of people received the second doses fully vaccinated, ninety-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three, seventy-eight, I'm sorry. That's forty-three point three percent of our adult population here on the Navajo Nation percent fully vaccinated. So good job, congratulations. Almost half of our people have been vaccinated here on the Navajo Nation. And so uh, I will conclude uh, the PowerPoint presentations now. And again, uh, let's stay the course, let's stay the course. Ashwani shkaynolini hadainolna uh, kodoh hanet nihichakunde lengi bilagana ketchukudu ashwade nichimado nihijen yucheni yamasand nek etchide uh, yada ltegi do bishbeda huzunigibich ashwane dalle nichika wachie ashwani shalchen kodoh obin sso go dene ketchuhanashto odin bilagana ketchukudala ndahilzi hot eh benina eh kodoh nacha ashwane dalle uh, di bilagana khonda kregi ya eh ahdi uh, do baat eda jukon bilagana uh, lego chanda kregoyah baadat eh eh tata tael khale benina gi judei nallnigi eh to te yahanaschnet nevikhiya pokha jeh eh benina eh basitjeh do baadah wilya ajeh nichidoh di bilagana chanda kregi nachaneyah betolna aron lehagana natzago kodonikhe ashidodel eh adeh shidozna danirodel jeh edo basitjoda aron ichidoh kodoh baadah wilya god aron ichidoh chande kregi ashwade ashwade da di no di kon asa ichi di kui ne la betolna nengi haleitza haile benina uh, di kon kha hadastogo ya chapters ndaznala haagana zanahaleitaw betolna hatno dan dehlkaha ya dehlkaha gi danichelni go eh ya heishi dene lini tlo cha iya go bilagana keya de ar betolna yahanatzago haagandje aron eh di dikosnshaga gi datilwet ohhot ah badah ne od or lehahad shi nikeni dene ndalne stoda olta haagandeh dehstal ester beni yedoh allah di tliel birthdayda hatno nachanatzago lata do bishbeda huzunda di dikosnshaga gi beda halon aron yahaiyag da idan jeh da idan eh di nihemess nachekudelne da idan aniltskosin mess nachekudelne cheyiltje datadogolwoloda jeh eh indehlkaha gi kodonikhe ashwane deila shikero shuna so eh hot ah eh hanet nihichakona deilyad o leh hadainolna ashwane shkaynolini kadeh meyteni kha hazel nachazlin zeh azehikishiko nachada atse ashwane shkaynolini And to conclude the present, presentation for me, uh, let's stay the course. We have a new public health emergency order that I mentioned. Really much, not much has changed other than the twenty-five uh, vehicles together uh, for events. Uh, and ten persons for other gatherings, traditional gatherings, ten PM to five AM is the lockdown. Uh, we asked that you keep following these protocol. And you know, I'll end with this, these contact tracers have updated us, you know what they tell us? They tell us that family and social gatherings are the reason why there is an uptick. People come going off, off the and we're just saying, wear your mask. You know, eat a little further apart from one another. Uh, and then the other is that our, our brothers and sisters, our family members who live off the nation, work off the nation, go to school off, they come home and there have been reports that they bring the virus back. And we would just ask for your patients' consideration for the greater good, as I've said, for all of us here on the Navajo Nation. Don't let up, everyone, don't let up. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you for the time. Uh, we will uh, not have a update for tomorrow since we had a midweek um, town hall and last night we were on the radio. So this will be our town hall for the week. We'll see you for the town hall next Tuesday and next Thursday. Hopefully we have the uh, the software and all the IT issues resolved by then so we can go. But as you can see, Eli did a great job, very professional in just using Facebook alone today. So thank you Eli for that. Uh, thank you for all the people that are on the call today as well. Laura, Dr. Laura Hammett, Dr. Jill Jim, Amanda, uh, Dr. Burge and Dr. Fowler, of course, as always, uh, doing our translations. And appreciate uh, our Vice President as well. So I'm gonna turn the time over to him for his updates. God bless you. God bless our great Navajo Nation. We'll see you soon.
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, thank you for your updates. And thank you for your leadership as well. As you know, this has been a long drawn out trying uh, pandemic, something we've never been eh, eh, a part of. So uh, leadership is uh, always at the optimum, at the, the, the optics of it all in the forefront. And we have had fine uh, uh, steermanship, fine leadership from our president. So we appreciate his, his advocacy and leadership all on every facet, every, every, everything. So um, Yat Ebeneh, the Vice President lies here. Comanche Michelin, Tola Hanabasas Chin, the Comanche Dashi Che, Ash Dashi Nellie. It's good to be with you all this morning in this April fourteenth town hall update. A little bit different as you heard, we couldn't be on yesterday and we won't be on tomorrow. But today is the time, timely day to pass along these new information, especially on the variants and the halt, halting of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, which you'll hear more about from our cast and from Dr. Hammett, who will speak uh, more directly to the um, Johnson and Johnson um, halting. So uh, but we appreciate you this morning. Thank you as we always do. We always give our updates as much as we can, as robust as we can, but knowing time is, is very valuable. And we appreciate everybody's time here, but I thank you for tuning in. As you know, uh, US officials um, have recommended a pause in the administration of the single dose Johnson and Johnson COVID nineteen vaccine uh, to investigate reports of uh, of uh, uh, some side effects and whatnot, that a very small, small, small um, amount of people have had. So there's six point eight million doses given and I believe there's six cases that have happened. So one in every million people, less than one in every million people have uh, received and experienced these side effects. A real small number, but still uh, any hint of uh, of uh, side effects and, and problems is uh, just uh, one to, in which to investigate. So we appreciate the CDC and the Federal Drug Administration to uh, provide these uh, advice for halting and demanding it actually. So again, you'll hear more here, don't wanna get too much into that uh, subject, which I don't really know too much about, other than, you know, getting the news about the same time you are. And of course, we have access to reports and data that, that most don't. And we do our best to be transparent and pass it along to you, our citizens. So we appreciate, love you very much. Um, so we do uh, want to give out some news here. The um, COVID nineteen vaccine doses administered in Arizona is two million five hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and thirty-one in a state that uh, I think the population is seven point five million people. So uh, you know, they're starting to get up there in the doses. And you know, uh, it's what's recommended, but not everybody wants to receive the, the vaccine for a myriad of different reasons. And so we just uh, do what we can as leaders to advocate and appreciate uh, um, our leadership in Arizona, New Mexico and Utah providing the same kind of effort that, that for their constituents. Again, we're all in this together. So, but we appreciate uh, the messaging that's going out and being provided by many agencies. Total positive cases in Arizona, eight hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-six with six hundred and ten new cases. So it looks like there is an uptick in the new cases. Uh, Apache County, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty-four with no new cases to report. That's a good news. Uh, Navajo County, sixteen thousand and four with six new cases to report. Coconino County rounding out our tri-county area in northeastern Arizona and northern Arizona, seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight total positive cases with twenty-two new cases to report there in uh, Arizona. So in New Mexico, we have had uh, one hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and sixty-four cases with one hundred and eighty-seven new cases to report. Uh, San Juan County, thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six with thirteen new cases. And Gallup McKinley County, twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-one with eight new cases to report. So we appreciate all of this data that the states provide through their health departments. And lastly, rounding out the Utah, uh, there have been one million seven hundred and eight thousand and two vaccine doses that have been administered in the state of Utah. And uh, we appreciate those and they're again, providing more opportunities for all of the vaccines to be uh, given out there in many cases. So just go to the Department of Health, the website and they'll be able to give you that information. Uh, total cases, three hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and forty-seven um, with three hundred and fifty-eight new cases to report. Uh, total positive cases in San Juan County, they're in southeastern Utah, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three uh, total cases. We also have um, the Navajo Utah Health System, one thousand and eighty-six, and both of those have no new cases to report. So, but we appreciate uh, um, this, the data that's given out. And of course, we wanna give you all the information that you all need as well. So um, nearly all medical and scientific organizations are in agreement. Again, you hear it again, time to time, President, Vice President, all of our speakers here will say the same thing. Face masks prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. If someone infected with the virus is wearing a mask, it will greatly decrease the likelihood of uh, it, that person spreading it to others around them. So, but just um, real quick, I, I think uh, you heard of the mental health, the behavioral health aspect, which you know, really isn't being uh, um, talked about much. It's just that when, once you're not able to meet, then it closes off that opportunity for dialogue, for true conversations. Last night, if you were on our radio forum there on KTNM six to eight o'clock, you heard one of our emergency medical technicians uh, give her, her, her story, her testimony. It was very powerful. Her um, not to retell her story, just uh, kinda high leveled it, but even, even her own kids, because she is in the hot zone day in, day out, twenty-four seven, right? Uh, her kids have been, and, and they're so young, they're very impressionable. And you know, depending on the messaging that they're receiving and the teaching they're receiving at home, her own children were not and did not readily receive her when she came home properly. The love that they needed to share and embrace was, was not allowed. And you know, again, through just the, the natural proceedings of her being potentially with positive people, coming home and children, grandparents just trying to mitigate the exposure, potential exposure, that, that, that real needed uh, uh, effort to show love, to show compassion, to show understanding was not given and granted. And so the uh, EMT technician had gone, undergone some tremendous hardship mentally. And uh, you know, who is there out there that are able to handle these types of discussions unless we all are about checking up on our citizens, your, your family ones, your loved ones. You know, President and I, we've done our best to visit the health facilities, to visit the vaccine uh, rollouts, to uh, acknowledge and to thank everyone that has been a part of this. The Navajo Nation has received some notoriety as of late. Because our health professionals have been so proficient and so efficient on rolling out this vaccine because of how hard it hit our nation, right? I mean, we've just been hit tremendously hard. President and I and all our leaders, we tried to magnify that message using the platforms that are given us. Uh, President's been on a lot of national uh, programs and he's done a great job in advocating for the Navajo Nation. But proper messaging needs to be given out and done and you all are a part of that proper messaging. How do we do this as a nation? Well, the best thing is just to handle everything in love, understanding, compassion, modeled by our Savior, Jesus Christ, right? Love. The best time to show love is in the hardest moments it takes to show love. We have to conjure it up somehow, deep within us, we have to manufacture it and we have to display it. And you know, especially in a pandemic where fear and doubt and question and, and all kinds of uh, other negative aspects have the opportunity to flourish. We as leaders, we need to change the message. We, as leaders, we need to change the messaging, and we have to exaggerate. Wear a mask. We have to exaggerate the messaging that gets out there, because we have to affect the least of these, which is way out physically distanced from us. Also, they don't have access to radio, to newsprint, to the social media platforms. They don't have internet, right? I mean, it's just like, the messaging needs to be brought out in the best way capable that we know how. And it needs to touch every citizen here on the Navajo Nation. That's what you have seen over this last year, is leadership trying to get the messaging out. And, and you all have been great, mostly. We do see the negativity that is out there. And all we can ask is pray that you become a sage in your community, show and display the love, compassion for your fellow citizens, your own family members, which I know you do, to help this whole pandemic recovery. We're all in this together. And as we advocate, as we talk, as we deliver messaging, you know, pray for the leaders, pray for President and I, as we do the same for you continually, constantly, and our health professionals, and we continue to, I'll just say lavish them and praise, lavish our health professionals because of the great work that they're doing, the sacrifice that they have done within their own family dynamic, and the commitment and dedication that they have shown and displayed in their fight, their own personal fight, right? Some of it is personal, keeping the nation safe with our health professionals, one by one. And I'm surrounded by some here on this call. We look forward to always chiming in with them. And President and I will continue to be on the forefront. Again, it's, it's just the dynamics of it all, the leaders, you know, again, newspapers, news, whatever we can to talk about our Navajo Nation and to give praise where praise is due and acknowledgement and recognition where recognition is due, honor, or honor is due. So, again, we're all in this together. We appreciate it. President did mention, I am chairing our economic recovery work group. What does it look like in a pandemic? You would think the optics of it all and the narrative that's not there, seemingly. We have been working meeting after meeting for the last eight months and just how it's gonna, our economic recovery will look like. I have some tidbits of information that we can't quite share because agreements haven't been signed, new grocery stores coming to areas that need them, different things like that. There's just been a, an elevated participation. President mentioned ARPA. I mean, right now, we're talking about ARPA. JT Willie was just on the Navi Work Group Committee here, and he was talking about what implementing, implementing the ARPA funds here, which we don't even know what the amount is going to be, $2 billion, literally coming to the Navajo Nation. Who would have thought? I mean, President and I are, you know, pinching ourselves. I mean, this is what every leader advocated for in the decades past, previous to us, this administration, always going to DC and asking for more money, more funding for this, that, and the other, bring direct services to our people, enhance healthcare, enhance education, enhance public safety, enhance all of the things that'll bring an added benefit to our nation and the quality of life. And, and here we are, $2 billion. And before that, we had $714 million, the largest, now the second largest funding package that has come to an Indian nation. Man, it's like it just landed in our lap, but it took a pandemic to make this happen. I say, God will bring you the answers, but we don't know how they'll be packaged. So sometimes you've heard leaders say, be careful what you pray for, right? We would have prayed for a pandemic to get all of these things. And yet, we have the real opportunity to reset, to catch up Indian country, our Navajo Nation, which we have said 40 years behind the times. Here we are. We have a great opportunity to put infrastructure in the ground, water, electrical, hang it in the air, electrical and broadband, to bring additional services and capability and capacity to the Navajo Nation. And we're all about that. And so we're working with all of our leaders, our entities, our division directors. It's all hands on deck mentality here, something which you really don't get to see. And I know many are wanting more information, and we do our best to get out what needs to get out. And, you know, it's, it's just, it's amazing. It's simply amazing what we, and President and I, hear and see and the things we're a part of and able to collaborate on. And it's rolling out before our eyes and your eyes. And so we do know that JT gave a report on the SSBCI, the State Small Business Credit Initiative. There'll be millions of dollars coming to that program to help our businesses, which President mentioned, to help our businesses in a time, in their most trying time, and their need to receive an impulse, receive funding to help them come mitigate the virus, but also to recover. And that's what this is about. And so how do we go forth? So we're working with all of our capacities within our realm, at the DC level, at the state level, at the national level, having discussions about economic development, business opportunities. You should be a part of the meetings that, that we're having right now. Very, very promising. But again, continue to work against a system which does not help, especially when timing is of the utmost importance, which CARES that was, who had that deadline, which subsequently got relieved and lengthened. And now we have ARPA, and we've got three years in which to work our projects within that realm. And so a little bit of leeway, but some of our chapters have complained that they have not been sought out in these projects. Again, going back to CARES, because that's our track record, CARES, and we have those tremendous deadlines. But the need, every project needs to be felt at the chapter level. So when we talk, and we're having those discussions, we're, we're talking about bringing rail to the Four Corners area, Napi area, been talked about for decades. This is the furthest we've gotten along. We've been a part of those discussions. We just had the new compact state tribal gaming compact sign, will be signed tomorrow in Phoenix. We'll be a part of that. Thank you, Governor Ducey, and all those that laid work to this. Our Sub Gaming Commission, thank you Chair, Virginia Charles Newton, and our esteemed group of council delegates who are on the Gaming Subcommittee. You all have been doing a great job, outstanding. And here we are, all of those things that were, at one time, they were months, years out there. And now those things come to fruition. So, again, projects that we're talking about now, prayerfully, they'll come to fruition. And it takes a lot of work and collaboration, and we're doing that as best as we can. And so all of that, again, I think the need for news to go out and the need for the government to be transparent is all magnified. But the issues, the problems are magnified when your government leaders, we all are pressed for time because of deadlines, which are, we're up against many. There's a lot of constraints and bottlenecks, which we know as bureaucracy and red tape. And so our President has led the charge on delivering a white paper to the Biden-Harris administration. And all those that would listen to us and our needs, we're having a myriad of tribal consultations. Never before have we ever had this number of tribal consultation requests. They want to listen in. They want to listen to what Indian country is saying. And, you know, this was all, this is the time for Native America, for Indian country. This is the time. And it's been building, you know, even in the previous administration, something which I, I know very well. I mean, you could agree or disagree. President Trump and the Trump administration was working on their Forgotten Peoples No More Platform, which was elevated to a point, never before again had administrations dealt with Indian country the way they're doing now. And the Biden-Harris team is now in power, and they are taking it to another level. But the momentum has built, because DC is built on career people. You just get different figures that come into power. So the momentum that we've seen escalating started. Last administration is continuing to go. And can you imagine what will be as we work out all of these initiatives? Again, I know I'm long-winded. President did want me to speak on some economic recovery stuff. We're continuing to work. We'll be as transparent as we can, working on those chapters in which that rail will come, in which a water storage energy project will be, the expansion of Raytheon there at Napi. Also, given added capacity to Napi, they'll be able to rail, by rail, their food and their produce and all of their, their things that they grow there and to the masses out on the railroad system. So as we join that, we just up our participation in that. We make prices cheaper because we're able to deliver goods a lot cheaper by rail. And, and that's just the economics of things. There's some things that I'm very excited about, the things that we're talking about right now. Again, you know, because of, they're just on the preliminary stages. It's real, really resonating, though. Really, really see some of the things that we can help make happen here, like the vision that's there and the expertise that's there, the technical analysis that needs to happen is there, and people are on the same page. So one by one, we'll be announcing those. So again, we appreciate our President's leadership for those five projects that I mentioned, there in, working with San Juan County and the Shiprop area, the Napi region, the, and the MOU that President and I signed with San Juan County there have brought notoriety, have brought $2 million in a bill grant to this project. And so as we oversee it, as we help discuss it, as we help collaborate with, again, those entities, we see a lot of great things possibly coming down to jobs and revenue. And again, very excited, we'll have a, maybe we should have our own forum here online and just talk about all those things, bringing in key players that are helping the Navajo Nation discuss all these things. So lastly, I just wanted to continue to advocate for you all to continue to reach out to those health professionals of ours. And, you know, what expertise do we have? Do I have? Does anybody have, if we're not professional, if we're not medical, if we're not psychologists, right? If we're not counselors, what business do we have? I'll say meddling, because that's how we look at it on a personal level, on a, on a people level, so to speak, citizen level. You know, we think, what do I know? Well, what you have is time. What you have is care. What you have is love. What you have is acceptance. What you have is a shoulder, whether it be in person, which we don't advocate unless it's your nuclear family. But we have a, we have a viral or a virtual shoulder that our nation can cry on, just by showing care and reaching out, showing somebody a smile, right? No, they're not flirting with you. They're showing care. They're showing love. I think our, our whole nation here can be bolstered. We can be encouraged by just that, reaching out to all of our health facilities, sending notes of care, sending notes of encouragement and hope, prayers. Definitely praying. That's where you really, man, you can really affect and change the environment is by praying. What if 400,000 of our citizens, not only on the Navajo Nation, but abroad, and all in the metropolitan areas of the United States, we just prayed for the Navajo Nation, for Indian country, for the world? And I know many of you do, but what if we just, just all just took this encouragement from President and Vice President and, and, and then just give it some credence? And I'll, I'll close with this. I'll just say a quick prayer, real quick, because we'll, we'll seal this. We'll need to seal this. But thank you again, President and I, First Lady, Second Lady. We love you all. Continue to pray for you all. We're all in this together. We want the best for you all, the Navajo Nation. Number one, it's our job, right? I mean, when it all boils down, it's our job to say that. But guess what? We mean it, and our knees are sore. We're praying from praying, and we'll continue to do so. And we know we can close out this COVID-19 pandemic because we prayed. We prayed, and we continue to pray, and it'll happen. So with that, I'll just close with prayer, and then I'll bring on Dr. Laura Hammett. She's waiting in the wings. Appreciate her patience. Vice President's been long-winded here, but was urged on and was urged by our President to deliver some messaging there. And I didn't even touch the cusp of what I should be talking about, but we'll continue to get the message out there. We'll use these platforms that we have at our disposable disposal to get to you. So again, we appreciate you, love you, and we continue to pray. So let's close this segment. Just want to seal this. Thank you, Lord. We thank you, Father, that you blessed the nation. Father, you know everyone. You know the number of hairs on our head. You knew us in our mother's womb, Lord. You have great care and love for us, and you wish that none would perish, Father. I pray that the nation be blessed today, that you heal our land and deliver us from this COVID-19 pandemic in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. And so now, thank you, Dr. Hammett. You are up next. We appreciate you and pray for you as well, and we look forward to your updates here. So ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Hammett of Johns Hopkins University. I don't even know what the office is called, but Dr. Hammett, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you very much, Vice President, and thank you, President, for the invitation to join the Town Hall this morning. Ya'ate Eboni, Shea E. Laura Hammett, Banashnesh, or Johns Hopkins Center for American Indian Health, Banashnesh. I wanted just to speak today about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine pause that was mentioned earlier. Many people saw the news yesterday that federal health agencies called for a pause in use of the Johnson and Johnson COVID-19 vaccine after ongoing safety monitoring identified a rare blood clotting disorder in six people who had received the vaccine. As Vice President and President mentioned, nearly 7 million doses of the J&amp;J vaccine have been given in the US so far. And there are six reported cases of that rare blood clotting disorder. This means that this has been reported in less than one in a million doses of vaccine given. All six cases occurred among women between the ages of 18 and 48 years. And symptoms occurred between six and 13 days after vaccination. Experts have yet to determine what, if any, relationship there is to the vaccine itself. And COVID-19 vaccine safety really remains a top priority in the US. The FDA and the CDC have many systems in place to find and report and investigate any adverse events, even those that could turn out to be unrelated to the vaccines. Out of an abundance of caution, use of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has been paused in the US, which means that while the CDC and the FDA are reviewing the six reported cases, it's recommended that the vaccine not be administered. This also helps healthcare providers be aware of the potential for this adverse event. And until the CDC and the FDA complete the review process, the Navajo Nation has paused a use of the J&amp;J vaccine. People have asked whether, you know, that means that the vaccine is unsafe. And on balance, no, the vaccine is, remains safe for the vast, vast majority of people and will not cause any severe adverse events. But a pause and a data review give us the opportunity to have accurate information on any possible side effects, even these very rare ones that, that may be associated. We've also heard from people who are wondering whether, you know, who've received the J&amp;J vaccine and wondering if they should be concerned, which is very understandable. And I want to reiterate that this is a very rare potential complication, again, occurring in, in less than one in a million doses. Navajo Area IHS has reported that around 4,000 doses of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine have been administered on Navajo Nation prior to the pause. And there have been no major side effects reported. If someone that received the Johnson and Johnson vaccine in the past one to three weeks is experiencing severe headaches or abdominal pain, difficulty breathing, or legs, those could all be symptoms of a clot, and they should contact their medical provider. But people don't need to be worried about mild headaches and flu-like symptoms that can occur in the first few days of vaccination. Those are common side effects that are temporary, that are brought on by the immune system's response to the vaccination. Fortunately, in the US, there are multiple vaccines that are authorized for use. All of them are highly efficacious. Hundreds of millions of doses of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines have been given around the world, and these are not associated with blood clots. And I hope that the very cautious and transparent approach to vaccine safety that the US, FDA, and CDC take will really increase confidence in the system and in the available vaccines. Because really, with the arrival of variants in this area, as we heard earlier from President and Vice President, it's more more important than ever for people to continue to be vaccinated, uh, to protect themselves and their loved ones from getting infected. Um, or from getting severe COVID nineteen disease. I'll wrap up there, um, hey ha, and I'll turn it over to uh, Dr. Fowler.
Yeah, Dr. Hammett, thank you, Dr. Hammett. Do you call us 30 hours on in, Lenny?
Just want to thank President Nez and Vice President for always providing comments to and updates to our Navajo relatives. And so there was, there was a forum yesterday. I hope people were able to listen and to get information about some of the vaccine updates and efforts regarding COVID. I'm Dr. Jill Jim. I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. I just wanted to do a couple of messaging around the national perspective around COVID. I know that the CDC provides updates regarding where we're at with the pandemic. And there's some concerns that we have and just around the variants and the numbers. As President mentioned, we're always providing these updates and we have public health emergency orders. We've been in the pandemic for over a year now and a lot of the decisions that are around how to expand services or not expand services are in relation to keeping people safe. It's not to scare people, it's not to alert people and cause some sort of fear. It is more of just educating and informing. So I just want to remind everyone that we are still in a public health emergency. And some of us, when we go outside of town or other places, we might not get that sense that people have forgotten that we're in a pandemic and there, we live in a new normal, but new normal right now. Some people might choose to not wear a mask and other things, but we encourage everyone to still take all these precautions that CDC recommends and also the Navajo Nation. There are differences in the way we approach our community mitigation. The responsibilities and the authorities of the Navajo government is to protect the Navajo people. The responsibilities of the state and the governors are to protect individuals and the state that they reside in. Then you have the federal responsibility to protect the entire citizens of the United States. So there's multiple layers of how we might understand how we protect our family and friends. And so on the Navajo Nation, we have experienced higher mortality, deaths related to COVID-19 compared to other racial and groups and ethnicities. And we also know that other groups such as Hispanic or African Americans experience higher rates of COVID and also deaths as well. And we understand that a lot of these, at the beginning, were related to the underlying factors of our population. We have a lot of chronic health conditions and that put us in the high-risk group for getting COVID. And that includes our very, our precious elders that we have. So those are the risk groups that have been identified across the pandemic, protecting our elders and also our family and relatives with high-risk health conditions. We know that we have diabetes rates that are a lot higher. There was even a suggestion for those that are at risk or those that are overweight. It's just not only around American Indians and Alaska natives, but also the United States. We also have a high obesity rates too. And even though we have a vaccine, we still have to understand the very needed ways to protect ourselves from getting really ill and sick. And that's the intention of a lot of this, is our individual responsibility to take action. And I pose that question sometimes with, with meetings or community meetings. But I always go back to saying Understanding, respecting and protecting those that we love here on the nation to keep our, to keep us safe, all of us, is the intention of this response. And we have all the tools that we need. But if someone chooses not to follow, that responsibility is on them. And we have a lot of Navajo teachings and values around the concept of and other ways of reminding individuals that is, it is our utmost, I guess, duty to be responsible for our own actions and protecting others. And we're in that time right now where we see our neighboring states lifting a lot of the mitigation strategies. And so as it is now, we've detected the UK variant and California variant here on the Navajo Nation. We know that the vaccines do benefit to some extent so that people don't get really ill. So just know that it's very important to do that. Across the United States, we're looking at a 6.5% increase in new cases around the seven-day average. So there is an increase from 3%, as last week they were a 3% increase, now it's 6.5% increase. And remember, like we, it's really hard to determine how COVID behaves, but as we're now experiencing increases and surges at the very beginning compared to where other countries had experienced their fourth wave. So there seems to be a global trend and progression and this, and CDC continues to advise us that to not lift restrictions too quickly, to maintain the safety precautions and wearing your mask. Because it's just a matter of when if we don't follow these very careful mitigation strategies. So there has been a 6.9, 6.5% increase in new cases in the last seven days. As of April 11th, there has been a 6% positivity rate, whereas the previous week it was at 5.7%. So there's a slight uptick and that's something that should be concerning. Hospitalizations have hospitalizations have increased as well on the week from 4,843 to 500 and 246 admissions per day. And there has been deaths, a decrease, which is good, that reported due to COVID have decreased. Also, that misured have, is around 70 adult, 65 years and older have received at least one dose. 62% have been fully vaccinated. And so those are the, some of the numbers from CDC. So I just wanted to reiterate some of the national trending that's going on in regards to COVID. So just be careful, take personal actions and responsibility to remind our elders and our relatives to not gather, as President mentioned. We're seeing and hearing of many reports where it's just not this. So when there is clusters that are still happening, but over time for a certain days, so you can't see them at once. But there are clusters that have been reported in the last month across the Navajo Nation due to gatherings. So it's very important, as President mentioned, to still wear a mask even though you have family that you're going to visit with or whatever for a short, brief a time. Wear your mask and even though you're vaccinated, still very important to wear your mask. So And so I just want to thank all the listeners and I wanted to hand over time to Dr. Bird. She'll probably give us an update on the gating criteria and any safety messages. So take it away, Dr. Bird. She's with Tubus City Regional Healthcare Center.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Jim and President and Vice President for inviting me this morning. And thank you all for sharing all the important information that you've already shared. I'm going to share some of the gating metrics. Give me one second. All right, so takes a few seconds to load here, but hopefully you can all see the gating criteria right here. You guys have seen this before, so no changes to this, but this is showing the risk levels that we've been dealing with and going through over the past many months. As mentioned before, we are still in risk level orange in the center here. So still with substantial community spread and high disease risk. So we're going to talk through each of these categories in terms of cases, testing capacity, public health capacity, hospital and vaccine data in the next few slides. So this is showing the cases since January of this year, so just in the past few months. As you all know, we've had a very nice decline in cases since January. And we're down sort of very low in the end of March. And then over the past few weeks, as Dr. Jim mentioned, we've seen a slight increase at the tail end here. And as she mentioned, a 6% increase over the past few weeks. So that's something that we're keeping a very close eye on, seeing sort of what this increase is, is doing, seeing if we're trailing the rest of the country, but watching closely. Below here, we see the RT curve. And again, this is the number of people that are infected with each COVID case on average. So this is showing by day. And if you average it over the past seven days, the average RT is about one. So about one case is being infected per case that we identify. On the right, we see the trends in numbers by each service unit, including border towns. And specifically looking at these curves, we see rises in Crown Point, Tohodali, Shiprock and Kanta. And we can see the number of cases per 100,000 over the last seven days and as well as the number of new cases in the seven days. So for Crown Point, it was 10 cases, Tohodali 31, Shiprock 24 and Kanta 7. So not as high as we're seeing with the big surge, but certainly things that we are keeping an eye on. Overall, Navajo Nation, we've had 108 cases over the past seven days. So these maps are showing the number of new cases per 100,000 in the past seven days. So the top map here shows the surrounding states as well as the service units as a whole. So again, I want to highlight that Colorado is dark gray. You will notice that the color scheme has changed from past weeks. It was sort of red, orange, yellow, green, and now it's sort of a shades of gray. So darker gray is a higher risk and Colorado is still in that higher risk color. Among the service units, we also see that Shiprock is sort of a darker gray, not quite as dark as Colorado. Crown Point into a city as well. So these are areas that we're keeping a close eye on. The map below here is looking at chapters specifically. There are 12 chapters that are in the darker gray color, again with a higher risk of transmission, looking at cases per 100,000 in the last week. So this graph is showing the number of tests over time. Now, those are the blue bars that are all together here. And the orange line is showing the test positivity. So overall, the test positivity is right about 6% recently, and that was from 5.7% as Dr. Jim mentioned. And there has been a little bit of a rise in that percent positivity in the past few weeks. And that's what we're looking closely at. And overall, the testing volume in blue here has been about stable for the past month or so. These graphs here show hospital capacity. On the left, we're looking at general hospital capacity, so not ICU beds. And we can see that both for 638s in blue, IHS facilities in yellow and Navajo Nation in green. Everything is well below the 80% capacity, which we monitor. So that's been, we've had bed availability. Looking at ICU beds, it does show that 638s were above the 80% capacity. It's since come below. But we do have more ICU beds occupied in general. And so something that we're watching closely, both the IHS and the Navajo Nation overall numbers are under that 80% capacity. So these, this slide shows our public health capacities. So on the left here, we see the number of contact tracers by each site. And this orange line shows our goal of five contact tracers per new daily case. And so most sites are above that line. Overall, on the bottom of this table here, it shows the number of contact tracers, Navajo Nation as a whole, which is 200, which is great. And overall, we have 13 contact tracers per new daily case, which again, we're doing very well in terms of public health capacity. And then lastly, this is a different looking slide from last week, but looking at COVID vaccines. So focusing on the top line here, for Navajo Nation with border towns as a whole, 49% of the total user population has initiated or started, had their first dose at least of a COVID vaccine. And then looking at the percent of the eligible populations, so people over age 16, that's 64% of the eligible population that have started getting their COVID vaccines. And then looking at fully vaccinated, so those that have received the two doses of Pfizer, Moderna, or the one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's 39% overall, the total user population. And again, looking at the eligible population over 16, half of all people have been fully vaccinated. That's great. And we're still working on that as well. And then down below here, so the color of the boxes as well as the size is showing the number of people vaccinated. So darker boxes have had more absolute numbers of people vaccinated. So if you hover over Shiprock, for example, you can see that 18,000 people, almost 19,000 have been fully vaccinated and 37,000 have initiated vaccine. And so we have those numbers. And so we're continuing to work on making sure that these numbers are up to date and as accurate as possible. And that's one of the goals. But again, just want to reiterate what everyone else has said as well. Certainly vaccination is still critically important. We're all following CDC and FDA closely in terms of the Johnson &amp; Johnson guidance going forward. But again, feel very confident in the Pfizer, Moderna vaccines in terms of their safety and efficacy and encourage people to be vaccinated. In the meantime, as everyone else has mentioned, continue mask-wearing, distancing, hand-washing. So I will pause there and pass it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bird. And so And so And so And so And so Tribal consultation And so At this time, I'd like to conclude by thanking all the listeners for tuning in. Please take care of yourself, continue to wear your mask, continue practicing your physical distance, washing your hands and avoid large gatherings. Thank you and have a great day. Okay.